All right, it is 5:30. We will call this meeting of the City Council to order for September 18th, 2023. First item on our agenda is to pledge allegiance to the flag. If you all join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Please note, all members of the council are present. At this time, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. I don't believe that we have any additions or deletions.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Kaler. Discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0. We'll go to approval of the minutes. We have the minutes from the September 5th regular City Council meeting. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those.
Motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion by Councilor Wagner.
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Kaler. Discussion? Hearing none, call the questions.
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes, motion carries 5-0. And next, we have the minutes for September 11th, 2023, Committee of the Whole. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we have a resolution to approving the payments and claims transfers. First, we have a transfer to the 401 Permanent Improvement Project or Permanent Improvement, that's $66,666.66. That's coming evenly out of the 601 Water and the 603 Sewer in the amount of $33,333.33. We are transferring $20,567.25 to the Reserve for Capital Outlet, the 403 Fund, and that's coming from the 601 Water in the amount of $14,693 and the 603 Sewer in the amount of $5,874.25, for a total of $87,233.91 to be transferred. Accounts payable, International Falls Regular Claims, $459,701.4. Airport Commission Claims Cash Flow, $176,731.86. And International Falls Library Board Claims in the amount of $6,263.63, for a total accounts payable of $642,696.53. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
Make a motion to adopt.
We have a motion by Councilor Wagner.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. It was really close where I hear better out of my left ear. We have a motion and a second. Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we go to audience. Is there anything, anyone in the audience that would like to bring forward that is not on our agenda? Hearing none, we will go to a public hearing. We do have a public hearing today on, to take comments on adding a floodplain ordinance to establish a floodplain regulations for the City of International Falls. Betty, do you have any back, or should we bring in city engineer on this one, which makes the most sense?
I can give a brief update, Mayor.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. The National Floodplain Insurance Program, NFIP, has been in place for a number of years. They approached and asked if we would be part of that, and with that, some of those areas along our Rainy River which are close to the floodplain or could be in the floodplain, depending on the mapping, they just redid a map, FEMA did, and it will help residents get funding back if they do have to mitigate or do anything on their shoreline, and also if they are required to have flood insurance, it helps premiums as well. So, it's no cost to the city to be a member of this and be involved in it, but it does benefit our residents. And so, we've been working through the process with the DNR, you know, FEMA, others involved on, you know, making sure that we are walking through this process properly and that this best suits our citizens and area that is affected, you know, within the city limits.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, I would open the public hearing and accept any comments that would like to come forth to the council. As a public hearing, we'll need you to state your name and address. I figure you know the rule by now.
Ed Bates, I live at 108 Riverview Boulevard. I'm just curious, in joining this, does that give insurance companies more leverage in requesting now additional flood insurance? Like, for example, where I live, I'm on the canal side, and, you know, I mean, the water would have to crest 30 feet, roughly.
I can answer that question. Homeowners' insurance policies, is that what you mean?
Yeah.
They've already done that. They did that based on the, yes, they did that based on the flood that took place. I was one of those residents, almost all up here was one of those residents. They even went down the Little Fork River, and they've already required new flood insurance, depending on how far you are from the water.
Right.
Will not affect that at all.
Okay, doesn't give them more leverage in asking for farther in, I guess, is my question? Because I wasn't a part of that, right? I don't live on the river, so that didn't affect me, but, you know, it would have to crest a very long way.
It would essentially be mortgage companies that are requiring that, and they've already done.
Perfect, thank you.
I'm so glad that you knew the answer to that one. I was, all right. Any other comments? Hearing none, I will close the public comment portion for the public hearing. I'll open it up to the council. Any questions or concerns that you have on, on the floodplain ordinance? All right, then I will close the public hearing, and we have this on the agenda to take up if we have any other questions or concerns that you may have. We'll go to opening bids or quotes. Approve the low quote of $56,653 from KGM Contractors for the sidewalk replacement at Fourth Avenue and Fourth Street Project.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Kaler. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0. All right, open sealed bids for the following real estate property located in International Falls, described as lots 3 through 5, Block 3. Green Acres First Edition, parcel identification is number 92-118-03030. Just so we are aware, in the event that we do have folks that are here that have put in a bid, as I understand it, in the rules and that are in there on how to do the bidding, if the folks are here and they want to bid higher, they are welcome to do so. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So, at this time, we will open up those bids.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This came about as we were approached by a citizen. We have out on our website and information that we have these properties available for sale, and the process is to take sealed bids. We had previously brought this property to in front of City Council, declared its surplus, declared an estimated value on it, and then it goes to the sealed bid process. We did advertise the real estate for sale on bids for two publications, September 1st and September 8th. They had until today at 5:30 to turn those bids in, and I have received three. So at this time, I will open these sealed bids in front of you, in order in which I received them.
Okay.
And I will state their name and the date in which I received them, from Mr. Tyler Weir on August 4th. We have a purchase price of $1,000. Purchase price bid of $1,000. And the next person to bid was Debbie Dunn. I received that on September 5th. And that purchase bid is for $4,000 on the parcels. The next document is from Slab Town Investments, and that was received today on 9/18. And that amount is for $10,000. So those are, that consists of the three bids that were received in my office.
So if we were to take the high bid, what happens at this point?
Then we would go to, well, you could ask other bidders, if there are other bidders in the room, which there is, if they would like to increase their bid.
Okay.
Otherwise, we would then make a motion to accept the bid and work with our city attorney in the process of a purchase agreement, and with that purchase agreement, there is going to be required a easement for a water utility that goes across that land. So that will be part of that documentation as well.
So at this time, the high bid is 10,000. Is there anyone in the room that would like to put a higher bid than 10,000?
11,000.
And that is Gevey Dunn, correct? So the, wow, I kind of like this. This is like an auctioneer here. So we have 11,000, 11,000 going once. Do we have anyone else in the room that wants to put in a bid? We have $12,000 at the back of the room, in your name, sir?
49 Rivers.
I knew that. All right, we have 12,000. Anyone willing to go higher than 12,000?
13,000.
13,000. Anyone willing to go higher than 13,000? The answer is no in the back of the room. Anyone willing to go higher than 13,000? All right, 13,000 going once. 13,000 going twice. Sold for $13,000! Never in a million years did I would have thought that I'd get to use that. All right, so we have $13,000. So at this time, the Chair would entertain a motion to accept the bid of $13,000.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Wagner. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'll have, and then the process that we'll be going through after this, unless we need to add it into the motion, is that you would, that Ms. Dunn would be working with the city attorney to get a developer's agreement to take the property with the easement?
Purchase agreement with the required easement for the water utility. That should be part of the motion.
Okay. Are you fine with that as part of the motion?
I'm fine with that, yeah.
You're fine with the second?
Yes.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? I have to say, this is the most fun thing that I've got to do up here in a while. I didn't really expect that I'd get to have an auction at the council meeting. Every day is different. All right, so we have a motion and a second. I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries 5-0. All right, next we go to consider bids for lots 3.
Oh, that's what you just did.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You covered that, remember? You were so excited.
Yeah, I know, I got really excited. The thing with it is, is I got really excited. All right, we're going to go to the consent agenda. We have the approval of the 2024 Group B-CBS Medicare Gold, Senior Gold Health Insurance Renewal and Authorized Signatures. Chair would entertain a motion to do that.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kaler.
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Buller. No discussion, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we have the first reading of the ordinance for the floodplain to the codes of ordinances for the floodplain regulation for the City of International Falls. Chair would entertain a motion to have the first reading.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kaler. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Holden. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we have a resolution authorizing execution of the Minnesota Department of Transportation Airport Improvement Grant, including land acquisition. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll approve it, but it said excluding land, is it?
Oh, excluding, not including.
It says excluding. I'll make the motion for excluding.
Second.
Well, now I don't know if I want to vote for it. All right, so we have a motion and a second, excluding the land acquisition. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we have a resolution approving the pursuit of 2023 Local Road Improvement Program, funding for the Ninth Street Improvement Project. Jason Fisher. I am not getting my words out. I apologize.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, a few meetings ago, you guys authorized us to pursue the LRIP funds, and as part of that is this resolution is required, part of the packet, so. Those funds are through the state, through their bonding committee that came through here recently, so we think this is a good project for this opportunity.
Excellent. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt that resolution.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Wagner. Discussion?
Aye.
You're ready to do it.
Yeah, 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 yes, yes. We might have to start going the other direction again, I keep this up.
We did that while you were gone.
Yeah.
All right, we'll call the question.
Oh, I don't want to step on anybody's toes that want to discuss something.
Any discussion? Pete's ready.
Because I think this is a very good project. I.
You say no?
Yes, a very good project. Very good.
Okay.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0. All right, Public Works Recommendations. Approve a job description for a part-time, seasonal part-time position for the Public Works Department and authorize advertisement for vacant positions.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Kaler. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we have the Committee of the Whole Recommendations. Approve the 2023 Christmas Schedule. Essentially, it's a half-day off on Friday, December 22nd, and a full day off for Monday, December 25th. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that holiday schedule.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller.
Second.
Second by Councilor Holden. Discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we have Street Eats LLC, approval for using the park for Smokey Bear on September 17th through the 24th. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kaler. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Any other business to come before the council? Hearing none, we'll move on to reports of boards, committees, department heads, city administrator.
Uh, Mayor and Council, I have nothing additional this evening. Thank you.
Okay. City Attorney?
I have nothing, thank you.
Department heads? In your packet, you'll find the police report for August, fire rescue monthly reports for August as well. Go to the reports of the mayor, council committees, boards and commissions.
I will just, I got a couple things since last time we had our One Watershed One Plan kickoff meeting in Rainier a couple weeks ago. Few people attended. Jason was there to represent the city if there are any technical questions or whatever, and there are different people staged of what was important and what's going to be important in this 10-year plan to try and work and come together, voted on it. I'm not sure how the coin voting came out at this time, and Pam Tamivi obviously was a little afraid I was getting a little long-winded with my welcome, so she said, "Thank you, Pete", and moved on to the next thing. But that's all right. And I went on the radio last week with Diana Adams, the library director, and I think it went really well. I had some people come up to me, and it was nice to know what's going on at the library, and some of the different things that was part of it, what they do, not just the traditional books, because there's so much other stuff going on now with, you know, they have eBooks and all, and movies even, and stuff like that, and...
Popcorn poppers.
Popcorn, and candy maker.
I'm well aware.
And one interesting thing I heard is, you know, because people used to listen to books on tape, well, newer vehicles don't come with CD players or anything, but, so they have something there where you can do that, and some different things. So that was pretty good and informative, I think, and, and lastly, the mayor and city administrator were there, and I saw, and Walt, that groundbreaking of the A-B apartments. That's all I have.
One, two really good positive things. One kind of a more negative thing, but I think it definitely needs to get discussed. We did get an email follow-up from the airport with some concern on us cutting funding for operations next year. We are going to be having a meeting pretty quick. That'll be a conversation that we have. We can't, we can't continue to fund at the level we have, and I think we're all aware of that. And we have some more conversations with the county, but there is some, some concerns on operations out there going into the next year with us cutting that portion out of our budget, but I think we're all well aware of that, and so we'll, we'll continue those conversations and see where, where that goes. Secondly, since the last council meeting, because we have our Committee of the Whole meetings, I forget that I missed some things that happened between meetings. Two weeks ago Wednesday, I was able to meet with the Senate Bonding Committee. They came up and they looked at both the International Bridge and the Cary Park Project, along with some other projects that they have in northern Minnesota. They were very impressed with what we have going on with Cary Park Project. However, we are kind of at a weird crossroads. We're going to have to have some real conversations with the community on what we're going to do at Cary Park, and we're going to need to get community input. So, that will be coming. We need to get some numbers on what it will be to rehab the current Cary Park facility. I think that would be very important for the conversation, along with what the, the project is that we've been looking at, and I think we're ready to have some real community conversation on what we want as we move forward. So that came up from the Bonding Committee. Secondly, they did look at the International Bridge. They wanted to know where we were with our comprehensive plan. That does show that we're looking at, hoping to get a new bridge. So they came and looked at that, and that was pretty much what, what happened. They took a look at it, and they wanted to know where funding was coming from. There is some conversation that the federal government would be funding it, there's some, Minnesota would be part of that. So, that was just an interesting turn, because we didn't really know that that was a piece of the puzzle. Two days later, I got an email asking if myself and the city administrator could join a group in Fort Francis to take a look at the bridge. We were able to go over and meet with both owners of the International Bridge, along with Premier Marcus Palowski, which was there looking at the bridge and the project that they have in Fort Francis. It is very politically motivated right now to do something with that bridge, both on the American side and on the Canadian side. Since then, I've had a lunch with the Fort Francis mayor, and we had a great conversation about the project as they, they're looking at it over in Fort Francis, the conversation that we're having with building a new customs building on this side. And one of the things from our last meeting that we had just a little over an hour ago, we had a conversation a little bit about homelessness. We're, we're struggling with a little bit of it here in International Falls, they're struggling with it in Fort Francis. At our EDA meeting this evening, we were able to fund some temporary housing for some folks, because it's, it's cheaper and more efficient and more satisfying to help people find a place to stay than putting them in jail and giving them legal, like, legal problems and such as well. So, myself and, and the Fort Francis mayor are going to continue having these discussions and how we can build our communities together, and I think the bridge is probably going to be a lot of those conversations, because it's so important to both sides of, of our communities. So, anyways, I just want to add on to what Councilor Kaler had mentioned on the Bacis A-B project. One of the things that I said when I spoke that day is we, we really need to look at our community as, as a stool, a three-legged stool, and we have, right now, a lot of really good things happening. Our business community is investing into the community. We have the city and county and state is investing into our infrastructure, and now, for the first time in quite some time, we have someone who has invested into our residential area, bringing in 27 apartment complexes, everything from one-bedroom to four-bedroom. 27 places will be able to open up in the, in the near future. What we saw tonight is right along that same path, to be able to sell at a discounted rate some of our property that's been off the tax rolls, to get that back on the tax rolls and get some housing, or... and get some housing or get it back on the tax rolls. We, we're doing some really good stuff. We have other properties, and I would urge anybody to take a look at what those properties are and reach out to the city, because we want to have people invest in our community. We're doing some really good stuff. So that's all I have. If anyone else has anything to add? All right, then we will go to audience. If there's anyone in the audience, both online or in person. Hearing none, correspondence. International Falls HRA meeting is going to be minutes from August 14th. International Falls Public Library meeting information is the 13th, September 13th, 2023. And the Minnesota Economic or Employment and Economic Development Office from September 26, 2023. So they have a listening session. And the last thing is, we have a meeting at 5:30 on Thursday. Is that correct? With the HRA. So. Five?
All I have is five in mind.
Okay. We will get our email to make sure everyone's aware of what time it is. It is five, though?
That's what I have in mind, but I'll double check.
Okay. So just a reminder that we have that meeting this week. With nothing else on our agenda, this meeting is adjourned.